Good evening and welcome to the May 7th, 2018 meeting of the Merrimack School Board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public participation. Since the room is empty, we will close public participation. Go on to item number three, which is the update on O'Gara Drive Department of Public Works project. I turn the mic over to Matt Chevannell.
Yeah, thank you. The Public Works Department of Town of Merrimack, where the O'Gara Drive area is, they've completed the, they completed the removal of the tennis courts and all the associated hardware, and they have graded the property, and they've left it in an acceptable state. They put a layer of loam on it, and they're going to put some hydro seed on it right now. The basketball courts are going to come next. They didn't get that complete over April vacation, but they have until after school gets out to work on that. So it's proceeding along nicely, and the area looks good. They did a very good job.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Andy?
So, so on the recommendation of Cinda, who's just arrived, I watched the town council meeting where they talked about this. There was some question about keeping the basketball courts up for longer until the end of the period of time because people were using them or something. Do you, do you know if they're, if they're, they have any plans or any usages up until the end of the lease thing, or?
It was, it was mentioned to me to keep it for a little bit longer period of time. They didn't feel it would interfere, but I didn't get the impression that it was after the end of the lease. My impression is by the end of the lease, that will be removed also.
Prior to the lease ending.
Yes, correct.
And the other comment I had is, we, at our last meeting, we discussed having a joint meeting early in August, like as close as we could. Has that information been shared with the Chair of the Town Council yet?
I'll take that one.
Okay.
I actually reached out to the Chair of the Town Council, who's now Finley Rothaus. I did speak to him last week, and I think there's definitely, he is going to be coming back to us. I said that we would like to speak as soon as feasible. August, we would be, that we actually vetted at our last meeting, that we would be available August 1st, as things stand today, to be able to meet as a joint body to talk about their expectations. I know that off that meeting, that there were questions about they're waiting for us for things, and I tried to get some clarity from Finley where he might have gotten that because at our last joint meeting, the last I knew is we couldn't talk about the skate park until such time, and the skate park was really the crux of the conversation, until such time as there was no longer this land lease agreement of the land. So it was our intention to talk the first feasible date after that, that they feel is legally comfortable. So Finley has been assigned a little homework assignment, because we're school people, it's what we do here, to just review that meeting and take a look at the discussion, and to come back to me with whether they can meet August 1st, or Finley also said that there might be a concern meeting so close to the expiration of the agreement, and to go further out, and what do we want to do. And that was never brought to our attention. That was also part of our discussion, that if they wanted us to do anything other than what we talked about at the joint meeting, that that's never been communicated to the board or the district. So at this point, to let us know the best appropriate next steps, and then we can plan as a board, to meet with them as a board, or plan as a district, to get a communication out about our expectations of that part of the property. So, but we really need them to tell us, based on their legal advice, what is expected. And from there, we will take that information and work as a board effectively. We're not here to make it difficult, but we're also not going to, A, get in the middle of a legal issue, and B, not have our, our i's dotted and our t's crossed when it comes to how that property is owned, used, and managed, when it comes to everything from liability and supervision of it. So with all that said, I think there's a lot to be discussed, and we just need to know the appropriate way to discuss it, and I'm waiting for Finley to get back to me. And that would be, as soon as I do, I will, we'll plan a next agenda item to take next steps. So, are there any other questions on, Cinda?
I mean, obviously not to be decided now, but as you mentioned liability, I mean, I think as a board, we'll want to figure out if that skate park, you know, will be there after July 1st, you know, so it's a matter of, once it's kind of under our domain, do we need to ride around our insurance? Is there some things to cover, that particular property that we haven't, maybe haven't covered, you know, up till now, because it's been under the management of the Town Council. So it's obviously, I know we're all thinking about it, but certainly want to, when you talk about i's dotted, t's crossed, that would be one thing that would come to mind.
Absolutely. Andy, you had something else?
Yeah, no, it's a good point, because there was this comment made about liability was, was sort of a dry tone in the meeting that they had, not us. And it got, occurred to me, I said, "We have public using our property at the track, at the Reed's Ferry soccer fields, all over the place." And my curiosity is, do we have to do anything explicit for the skate park, or is it covered somehow over use? You know, like Cinda said, is it something new that we have to worry about? So it'll be good to get an interpretation of that.
Yeah, I would, I would want to consult with our insurance carrier, Primex. I mean, they toured our entire facilities. They've looked at, at everything we have, and we've never brought them down to the skate park, per se, because it was covered under the town's liability. And normally, when it's in use, there is an attendant there, and if the attendant, there isn't, okay.
No, there's not.
I used to see an attendant there.
They removed that, no, like three years ago, four years ago?
Three years ago, and they don't have any cameras either, which was also a concern we shared at our joint meeting two times ago.
So that would be, I agree. That would be something that I'd confer with the, the insurance carrier, and we would need to discuss, so.
So, on that, I figured I would give Finley about a week. So by the end of the week, if I don't hear back from Finley, I will reach back out to him to find out where they're at, and what next steps should be on our end. Because the land lease expires July 31st, so that gives us a couple of months, but we only meet once in July. So we really want to have things buttoned up in probably our last June meeting at the latest. I think that would be probably the best steps for us. Cinda?
And I would say my thought is, I mean, this is my thought, my personal view, is that, you know, we're not using that property right now, and if we can find a way to be accommodating to the town, and they just need to tell us what we want, so we can go through and, you know, basically figure out what those details are, because, I mean, I can't, I can't, like, and I'm very grateful, by the way. I wanted to add that they put the grass seed on there. I wanted that from the get-go. So the fact that they took that extra step and put some fill-down and stuff, I'm really appreciative of. But, yeah.
Okay. Michael?
Thank you. I would like to know a little bit about, more about the insurance, and whether we could actually cover it so that there is continuity of usage. I know that when the initial discussion came up, it was an uproar that it was going away altogether. So if we could actually get it so that it did not close even for a short period of time, that would be, I think, beneficial just publicly on the PR side, all around. So if, obviously, if it's covered by the insurance, that would be great, and if we could just keep it going as we're continuing the discussions with the Town Council, that would be, I think, the best decision.
Right. And if it does become on our policy, I think we do have to talk about how we're going to monitor it. That's important, because it's not being monitored at all now, but it's also being managed by the town, so we don't even have really skin in that game at this time. Michael?
Just as a follow-up, my, my thought process would be that if we were to continue to allow the skate park to be there, that it would actually come under the preview of the town again, and that it would not be a long-term solution that we would look to ensure it for. So that, I would think that that would be my personal opinion of what I would want in the future, not the school district becoming part of Parks and Recs, so.
Clearly not what we want to do. We've got enough on our plate. Anyone else with questions or comments on the skate park, the whole area at the end of O'Gara? I think we're good for now. So thank you for the update, Matt.
Yep.
We're on to item number five, which is Appointing Board Members to Non-District Committees. I'm sorry, whoops, four. My goodness. Sorry, guys. Responses to Board Regarding Contract Award for Water Filtration. So Matt, keep it going.
Yep, thank you. Last, last meeting we had, we had Second Wind up as an approved vendor for the implementation and the installation and continued monitoring of the PFOA water filtration systems for six of the schools. We had called up some clients of theirs in the past. They were recommended by the State and New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, but you had asked to call up some, some more, so that's what we went about doing. So we talked with Governor Wentworth, Kearsarge, and Exeter School District, and all of them went through the process of interviewing firms. This is a very specialty-type item. Not everybody is equipped to, to do such on a scale such as this. Second Wind had worked with the State and New Hampshire filtrating, filtering public water supplies for 25 years, so all of the individual school districts I listed went through an interview process as opposed to getting a specification and having it go out to bid. The thoughts that people had as far as the company's performance were excellent. They were always available if something happened. The ongoing maintenance was something that they didn't have to schedule. It was scheduled and then approved by the, the school district. It was one of these things where, once it was in place, if there are any issues, they were called up, they came right over, they just tested everything. And one, I talked to Facilities Director and said, "They kept us out of trouble," because they were on a public wa, a private water supply, and so there's increased requirements with the state when you're on a private well, if you're a school district. So they did all that testing, coordinated with DES. As far as I'm concerned, I've heard nothing but positive reviews on them, and everybody seemed to have followed the same process that we did. In Exeter, I did have a, going off on a tangent for a second, did have an interesting conversation with the Facilities Director there on the artificial surface at the high school. It's 12 years old, and they're looking to start replacing it in the next year. So there's some data for you that you hadn't had recently, so.
Okay. Are there any questions on filtration? Andy?
There was, one other question that came up that I believe Jason Brodsky asked the question at the end, as to whether there was any experience or understanding as to whether there's any performance metrics in terms of what the detectable levels of PFOAs would be afterwards. And A, the specs, what have they said about what they're, what they would guarantee is?
Zero. They're going to guarantee zero.
They're guaranteeing zero. In writing, they're guaranteeing zero.
Yes. See, when the first, first tank is the first line of defense. Second tank picks up anything else. If the first tank starts to get readings, I don't know in, in what level, if they get specific readings, let's say 10 or 15 or something like that, they know that's time to change the first tank out. But what the water coming out of the second tank out is still going to be zero. So that's when they do the switch over, when the first tank showed some elevation. So they would always guarantee a level of zero PFOAs, 100% of the time.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions on the filtration plan? Or are we, we're chewing, we're chewing. Okay. Michael?
So, just, are you looking, I think one of the things that I think would be beneficial, since we're asking for a no bid, is for the board to actually support Matt Chevannell. And so what I would like to do is actually put together, put forward a motion that we ask the administration to move forward with Second Wind on a no-bid contract in regards to the water filtration system at $128,000. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Cinda. Do you want to speak to your motion, Michael?
I think that this is a good process, that in order to inform the public, allow them to understand that there's some processes that would allow a no-bid contract to go through the, through the administration, allowing the administration to come forward to the board and have the backing of the board. I think it's the best way to go forward.
Okay, and would you mind amending your motion to 128.5? Because I believe that's the number that was in our budget.
Yeah.
So I amend the motion to?
128.598.
Yeah, okay, and I amend my motion to the price specified in the project.
Thank you, and resecond. So we feel good about this now. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on the motion? Andy?
My only comment is, and Michael's absolutely correct, you know, with the motion, a no-bid contract. But I want to make sure people understand, it's not as though we're throwing it to the first, the first bone, guy selling bones that came down the road. A lot of diligence has been done, and this is a very unique thing. So the fact it's no bid is not, is accurate, because we didn't get other bids, but we believe that there's no other game in town for this. So we needed to find out the, the reputability and the, the performance and all that stuff of the vendor we were working with. So it's, that's my only comment.
Okay, so Chris, and then Cinda?
So, what exactly is a no-bid contract versus a big contract?
A, a big contract would have usually an RFP or an RFQ, request for proposal, request for quote, where you basically tell them what you want done, and then they'll tell you how they're going to do it, and how much they're going to charge you, and you have a specified time to take those bids, bring them in, vet them for both what they can provide and for what they can, they will charge for that service or product they provide. So it's a process with, I would say, a lot of
Multiple vendors.
Multiple vendors, a lot of broadcasting to invite vendors to the table, and then they basically compete for the business. So.
When we, if I could give you an example, the last, of course, roofs always go out to bid. We have a roofing manufacturer that we prefer. It's called Garland. It's a type of a roof. It's a built-up roof with insulation values and everything like that. That's the product we prefer. That's the, the 40-year warranty work, warranty roof. We have them draw up a list of specifications. This is how they would like it to be installed, where the seam should be. We have a mandatory walkthrough of all the contractors, and then we get sealed bids. We do the same thing with, let's see, with the track in back of the high school. Stephen Keach was point on that, as far as getting up all the bid documentations and everything like that, drawing the specifications for even how deep the crushed rock is going to be underneath the new track surface. So once those are done, then we go out to bid, and the bids come in, and Steve manages that for us. The no-bid portion of this is when you have a, a specialty-type niche area where you can, you're comfortable, you're more comfortable finding out about a company, finding about their track record, finding about how they, they do business, their response time, and having a conversation with them, and then awarding it on that, because there's more of a criticality of, of job performance. You know, when you're talking zero, and it has to be zero, you want to make sure you get the best person for the job, not necessarily the best price. And plus, they did all the design work upfront, which, if we were to stop now and bid it, we would have to hire an engineer to do all that design work, and then go out to bid, because you can't bid something you don't know what the design of is, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I've probably more than answered your question, but I just wanted to make it clear. Yeah, okay.
Cinda?
And I would just say, in addition to Mike and Andy's points, is the time constraint. You know, we've made promises to the public, and we certainly want to be able to meet the timeline before this 2018-19 school year begins.
Mike?
Thank you. I just want to add to what Matt has said, too, is that as we were discussing the water filtration system back in a while ago, I guess, is at this point, I'll just say, the initial thought process around it was, it was going to be millions of dollars to actually do the district. And this particular company actually came forward with a solution. They were proactive, actually reached out to, I believe, Matt or someone, I'm not sure, directly, is that?
It was Tom Tussaud initially, yes.
Yeah. So, so the company was proactive, coming forward with a solution that actually met the, the budget that I think was adequate for the taxpayers, and finding a solution for the school district, which is, to me, and being in sales, I think that's something that goes a long way, and you're trying to help solve someone's business problem versus actually, you know, just being part of the process.
Andy?
And just to close that final thought, we're sort of both completing each other's thoughts here, but the important part is, with water filtration is, it's not just the initial install, it's how you keep up with it over the years to make sure. So that guarantee of zero detect and the ongoing support and understanding the system to be able to make sure that that sort of rounded it all out. So I mean, I mean, you could talk about putting in a roof or a whatever, and then you got a manufacturer's warranty well. You don't have to come in and replace the roof every couple of years because the membrane's a little dirty or something silly like that. Here, with filtration, you've got to keep the media up, keep the, the testing up and all that stuff, so.
Cinda?
Well, back to the promise of a zero detect, it may be worth it in the contract to find out what those, if for some reason it's not zero detect, you know, what would they, you know, would there be any kind of a financial payoff, like?
They, they, oh, okay, in case of some sort of error or something like that?
Yeah, if it's not zero detect.
Because in the contract would be guar, it's already guar, we talked guaranteed zero.
Okay, so let's
Because the board wants zero, so that's what the board's going to get.
So hypothetically?
So you want some penalty if it's not zero?
Yeah, or a reduction of, of fees, something like that.
Okay. We could work that in.
Thank you.
Okay. So, any other questions on, I felt like a chomp at the bit. No, you ready? Okay. We are good. So we must put this motion to a vote now, if we're ready. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. The motion carries 500. Filter on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. And now on to item number five, I mean it this time, and that's Appointing Board Members to Non-District Committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've requested this item be added to the agenda this week because of the discussion that we had in the last meeting in regards to what committees actually had liaisons that were assigned per the, the board. And it came to my attention that some of the committees were not recognized as liaisons from the board, so I thought as a procedural item, that would be best that all the committees that have assigned individuals from the board actually have the backing of the board. So an example would be that if, if a committee were to ask for a liaison to be added, it should come to the board and be voted on so that that liaison had the backing to speak in regards to, from the board, as the, as a board member within that group, or committee, I should say. So what I was looking for is to possibly read over and make a motion that we accept the committees in a whole, instead of trying to figure out which ones haven't and which one have, just as clearly just defining the committees and just having a vote in regards to that. And then, just in the future, if any committees were to be added or requested to have a liaison, then the board should approve that to actually have that representation.
Okay. And Mike, I think when you were asking, it wasn't about stuff that was within district, like the Budget Committee, like professional development, but it was non-district-based committees that have a school board liaison. And the three that would come up are Merrimack Safe, that exist today, are Merrimack Safeguard, the Town Parks and Recreation Committee, and the Town Center Committee, which Matt Chevannell represents the board as it's during business hours. And those are the only three, correct, that you were, because the others would be district operational committees?
I was just trying to make this, that it was just a blanket statement, and try to make it simple, instead of trying to pick out which ones exactly, because, so, so it was Greater Woods?
Oh, Greater Woods would also be, that's a hybrid. The committee, the subcommittee is part of Conservation Commission, but we own 50 acres of that parcel.
So I think the committee, it's, right, so if we were to have a, the point for, for me is that if someone's representing the school board, they should have the school board's backing. That's all I'm looking for.
Okay.
So that anybody that is on any committee goes to that, those meetings with the backing of the board, instead of, basically, I'm looking for a procedural process, basically.
Andy?
So it makes sense. So typically, we have, and so the voters know, we're talking about a list that we have in terms of the, the liaison assignments. And as we've discussed through this process the last few weeks, some things are very, like you said, within district that are formal ones, and then other things that come up, like the, the Town Center Committee, Greater Woods, that, you know, sometimes it has a specific school board liaison, sometimes it doesn't. It would be good to maybe, maybe to make it clear, have a group on this sort of page that identifies the in-district business sort of things like you described, and then have another section that talks about the ones that are, that are maybe not part of it necessarily, so we can add Greater Woods, we can add the Town Center, and any, and Parks and Rec, or whatever, whatever makes sense to divide it. Because I think, I agree with Mike, because, and we ran into this years ago, when, when the Town Center Committee used to have a formal liaison and then didn't. How do we have representation and make sure that that person feeds back info to the board as required, and then we give that person direction as to how to respond potentially, or something like that? Now, I know, Matt, there hasn't been a lot in the Town Center Committee, but if something got hot, like around building a sidewalk or whatever, I want to make sure that, that you're officially recognized, and we have a methodology to be able to feed that sort of information back and forth. I think that's, I tried to say this six years ago when we had the Town Center Committee, but I think I stumbled when I did it. But I think the idea is, is to, is to sort of categorize the two different areas and make sure we track them, and be able to, if there's something that we need to talk about, we have the opportunity to do it. Right?
So, so on that note, I will tell you, I failed to put Greater Woods on this. So on that note, I will resend this out to the board for our next meeting with Greater Woods on this. So my apologies for that.
No, no, that's, I mean, I, I'm fine with making the motion and putting this to bed tonight.
Yeah, oh, we can do that, and then I'll just make sure that you all have a formal document. I stuck mine on my fridge. But on that note, so.
So just for clarification, we have Greater Woods, we have the Town Center, we have Parks and Rec, we have Merrimack Safeguard.
Those are the four.
Those are the four?
They're non-district operational.
Okay. So what, what I would like to do is make a motion that the school board, I'm having one of those nights, sorry. I had this in my soccer practice, too, tonight, couldn't even think. So I would like the school board to be able to nominate individuals as liaisons to the Greater Woods, Town Center, Parks and Rec, and Merrimack Safeguard to be able to provide feedback from the board to these committees, and also give the discretion to the Chair of the school board to appoint the board members to these positions. Does that make sense?
Seconded by Andy. Do you want to speak further to your motion?
No, I think it's pretty clear, but I appreciate this opportunity to
Yeah.
Put this process in place, and just also give the backing to those individuals that are representing the school district at these committees.
Right. I, I, the one thing I would add to your comment was, I think it's more importantly that you're giving us feedback, is that when the district needs to take a position, that we give you the directive on what that position is. We do that every year with NHSBA, that we go through every motion. So if, if we're talking about making an initiative that affects district operations or students, that we make sure that the, the board has that guidance to give to you, to, to use the, you know, board liaison, whatever it may be, to go out and do that with the backing of the board, so.
And I do want to say, since there was a constituent or not a constituent, an individual brought information forward, I know that we spoke a lot about your position at Greater Woods, and I just want to say that I do thank you for your work on Greater Woods, and I think you've done a lot of great work with that committee in, in the past, so, thank you.
Thank you. So on that note, you'll have just a hard copy for, future reference for your refrigerators, it looks nice. And what I'll also do, just for your edifications, I'll take the ones that are not district operational, and I'll put them at the very bottom. So they will be segregated with a little note, and we'll have that going forward as a living document. So, on that note, of, yes, on that note of vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. The motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you.
And now we're on to item number six, which is the request for board approval of change of audit firm for 2017-2018 audit. Matt?
Thank you. In the state of New Hampshire, as far as government accounting, there are really, for a district this size, there are two top-tier auditing firms in the state. One of them is Melanson &amp; Heath that we've had for probably over eight years, and the other is Plodzik &amp; Sanderson that I have personal experience with for probably around 16 years prior. So, we would like to switch auditing firms from Melanson &amp; Heath to Plodzik &amp; Sanderson, basically because the memo came out a couple of years ago from the DOE saying it's a, it's a good and it's a best practice to change audit firms every five to 10 years. And so this is something that we've been thinking about and looking at, and we interviewed the principal at Plodzik &amp; Sanderson, sat him down, talked to him for a little bit, felt comfortable with the services he would provide, he met our staff, our staff met him. It's beneficial that it's the same audit firm that the town is using, so we'll get a little economies of scale there. There won't be a lot of transition costs, this is a lot of upfront costs that a new audit firm has to do in taking the books from the old audit firm. So, we would just like your approval to do that. Plodzik &amp; Sanderson is a firm that started out with two gentlemen who worked for the Department of Revenue Administration around probably 50 years ago, who started their own firm. One was Steve Plodzik, one was Bob Sanderson. I know, know them both, and they're a very good firm, and we hope you'd accept the change.
Andy? And Cindy, your hand, you're next, okay.
Do we know, is there any cost difference?
No.
In terms of budget?
No.
Same?
Same.
Cindy?
So what you're saying is it's the standard practice?
Yes.
That we would?
Yeah.
So the same thing would happen a few years down the line with the firm, this new firm, right?
Yeah.
We'd do some for a period of years, and then?
We'd probably go back to either Melanson &amp; Heath, or we'd go back, maybe there'd be another firm who established themselves. We want somebody who, we want experienced auditors to come in and audit us. Let me give you an example. Plodzik &amp; Sanderson and Melanson &amp; Heath, I always, before the tax rate is set, make sure I know what my unassigned fund balance is, from them. Then I make sure they look at my DOE 25 and see that number printed on the DOE 25 that I'm submitting to the Department of Ed. That's why it's critical that they match up with me, I match up with them, and everything is a collaborative effort to make sure we have everything correct. If not, you wind up like with a situation like Goffstown. We're talking about unassigned fund balance. Someone didn't make that cross-check. I don't know if that's, I don't know whose fault that is, but that is a flaw. You know, we don't have these, those with this type, these types of companies. So this is pretty much standard practice in the industry to make the change at the 10-year mark or so, and we thought we'd do it this year, so.
So who got two minutes in the penalty box in Goffstown for that?
So we have no concerns over the performance of-
Oh, absolutely not, no.
We're just simply following best practices.
Right, correct.
Okay. So are there any other questions on the auditing firm? Seeing none, I think one of the requests Matt had was to waive the two-week rule and, and make this shift now because of the timelines of our budgets. So I will entertain a motion. I will move that we authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business to shift our, our auditing firm over to Plodzik &amp; Sanderson, waiving the two-week rule. And Mike, is that second? And Mike is second. So, to that, I think Matt made a good case, I think it sounds like the right thing to do, and you have our support, as long as we get one more vote. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. The motion carries five zero zero. On to item number seven, which is the board's vote to purchase the Brentwood property and authorize the signing of the closing documents. So Marge?
Thank you. So in your packet, I provided you with the actual warrant, which was put before the voters on April 10th, and the voter result, which then takes us to moving forward for the actual purchase of the Brentwood property. On your behalf, I've been working with Attorney Bronstein, who is the attorney who has been helping us through this process. So what I need to point out is that the closing date is July 17th. In preparation for that closing date, two things needed to be done. One was a title search, and the other was a plot plan. And Attorney Bronstein went forward, as a matter of course, to put those two processes in place. The title search will be completed by May 11th, and the plot plan will be completed by May 8th. The, we are still awaiting to hear what the last day for the tenant will be. As you know, the tenant right now is the Nashua School District, and I would assume that the lease goes until June 30th, but I will know better after I speak to the Director of Suresk, and I did not get a response today, so I can tell you that the next time we meet. What Attorney Bronstein is requesting is that you take two formal votes tonight. You will see at your place what the, what the items say, and he is saying that this is important, first of all, to just talk in terms of proceeding with the purchase of one Brentwood, the building and the land for $275,000. And then, he is requesting that there be a formal authorization for the chair and/or vice chair to be able to execute all of the necessary closing documents. I am pleased to say that both the chair and vice chair will be available on July 17th, so if possible, they will both be able to sign this agreement or these agreements. So, I put that before you tonight. If possible, it would be great for you to act upon them. If you feel that you want to wait until the 21st of May, that's fine, too.
Andy?
Andy? Deeper voice. So, you mentioned that the attorney is doing the plot pa-, plot plan and the title search sort of in parallel to be prepared. The other question is, is that we never had the ability to look at the building at all, internal, internal, sort of inspect it. We know that it's a little bit, we, we know what it is because we've been in it before, but there was also talk about once we, we knew that there was passage and approval for us to do it, there would be some sort of an inspection or look at the building to make sure there wasn't any, like, toxic waste or some sort of issue that we'd have to deal with that we aren't expecting. Do we know if there's any plan or anything's been done to understand that? I mean, because the fear is, is that we, if it's a building that we have, we're going to do something with is one thing, but if we find, understand that there's some, some major multi-thousand-dollar removal of something, we have to do.
Before Matt speaks, the only thing I want to say is, it has been servicing as a school for children, and therefore it had to meet a particular standard in order for students to be there. So I'm going to say, because it's been, it has had to adhere to those codes, I feel that that is not a concern. With that being said, however, we still obviously want to get in and be able to do, you know, some of our own inspection, if you will, and that's why it's so important for us to understand, when is the tenant going to take leave? But Attorney, Attorney Bronstein wants us to keep moving forward, because he would say July 17th is going to come quicker than we think, and so perhaps I'll have a better answer for you on the 21st.
That's fine, I get it.
But would you concur with me that because it's been servicing as a school?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been, it's been inspected by the Merrimack Fire Department. I've talked with the chief personally about that and the condition of the building. There, there is some preliminary information we do have from the multiple walkthroughs that Marinase did when he was looking at it for reconfiguration and going through the different materials. We thought there was, there was one piece of siding that was asbestos, and he took a sample, and we had a test, and it turned out to be something entirely different. So, we have gone through it in a preliminary fashion, have not found any obvious violations. And as far as any tanks go, the only tank we know of is the one sitting, sitting above ground that you can see, so.
The only reason I bring this up is during the deliberative session, one of the residents of the town asked the question about, to make sure that once we're, once this was approved, that before we signed and it took ownership, that we just validated that there wasn't anything major there. So, I just want to make sure that we as a board, you know, before the chair or I, or both of us sign in July, that we're comfortable with what it is we're getting, eyes open and everything like that.
Yeah, I recall that conversation, yes.
Michael, your hammer's up?
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate what Andy said. My understanding was during all these discussions that we would actually do a inspection of the building, which I would have, would think is similar to like a, you know, home inspection, although obviously on a business side, it's probably a lot different, but just obviously in the structure itself, a little bit deeper and stuff like that. So that was my understanding of something that we would be doing before we actually make the purchase.
Okay. Sounds good. And I think we're still, you know, with, saying that the lease ends June 30th, speculating, of course, that that gives us two and a half weeks, which is still workable even with the July 4th holiday, so. So on that, I think we're, we're in good shape. So on that, we have to have a couple of motions to make this thing work out. So, I will entertain a motion to proceed with the purchase. Andy?
So, I'll read it, just to make sure it's clear. The motions, make a motion to proceed with the purchase for sales price of $275,000 of landed buildings at one Brentwood Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire, known as the Brentwood School, authorized by the 2018 Annual Merrimack School District Meeting.
Is there a second? Seconded by Cindy. Speak to the motion?
I think that, at this point in time, I think that barring anything that occurs, which I don't expect, and because of the timeframe and the, and the way things line up, this motion makes sense to do so that we can, we can proceed. If during that two-week we find something major, we could as a board choose to change, should we want to, but I think we have to go with the assumption that we're going to move forward with it, with it between now and then, so.
Naomi?
Just for clarity, from the previous conversation, does that mean we are or are not inspecting it?
We've given a directive to have an inspection done, so that's by consensus, that will be the plan, and, you know, I think, barring any-
We'll follow through and do that, yes.
Yep, so, you know, if for any reason, you know, we need to come back to the board and have a reconsideration vote, if, you know, God forbid, I, I would doubt to hear it, but a, a God forbid vote, then we can absolutely, as a board, I'm sure reconvene if we have to.
And I believe if, we would have a meeting prior to the 17th of July-
Oh, yeah.
-if that happens, so.
Yeah.
So, on, on that note, if there's no other questions to the motion, all those in favor of authorizing the purchase at $275,000 for the Brentwood School, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. The motion carries five zero zero. And the next order of business is that we have, Andy and/or I have authorization to sign the closing documents. Michael?
I'd like to motion to authorize the chair or the vice chair to execute, I'm sorry, hold on, read that again. Motion to authorize the chair and/or vice chair to execute all necessary closing documents on behalf of the Merrimack School District with respect to the purchase of the Brentwood School, as authorized by the Merrimack School Board in the 2018 Annual Merrimack School District Meeting.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. Would you like to speak to the motion?
I think we're all set.
Great, okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. The motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. So we're on to item number eight, which is the confirmation of the last day of school for students and staff. And back with you, Marge.
Thank you. So, the first thing I want to do is to just tell you that in this particular item, I want to give thanks to Mark McLaughlin and Linda Hastings, who helped me with this particular item. So, the first thing I will tell you is that the last day of school for students will be Friday, June 22nd, and that is based on meeting the number of required instructional hours and providing full-day kindergarten for four days for our learners. And, once that became known, then the next thing that we needed to do was look both for the Merrimack Teachers Association and the members of the Merrimack Educational Support Staff Association to find out what was necessary. June 22nd is technically the 179th day of school, and therefore, the staff needs to put in one additional day to make 180. So, we have met with both the President of the Merrimack Teachers Association, who in turn has met with the teachers, and the Executive Board of the Merrimack Educational Support Staff Association, to literally have dialogue about how this might be done. In addition, you will see in your packet, two memorandums of agreement. These memorandums were drawn up by Attorney Peel and have received approval from both of the associations. The intent will be that the hours to be made up will be made up between May 14th and June 14th, at least one hour after school per day, and that the, the principal will oversee what is to be done in the respective buildings. We are saying that it is to follow what they would normally do in their job description. So in other words, the teacher might be doing planning of lesson plans, grading assignments, preparing comments for report cards, or doing whatever would naturally be done. One thing we cannot do by master agreement is to do any professional development for the professional staff, because they've already had their professional development as specified in the master agreement. On the other hand, the support staff is not inhibited from that particular thing, so support staff, that is, paraeducators, might be able to have training. So as we speak, that is all being sorted out. We also have tapped into Nancy Rose, the Director of Technology, to be able to have an electronic means of being able to record this for accountability purposes. So, what I want to get across to you is that I am very, very pleased with the professional staff and the support staff who came to the table and had lots of discussion and were willing to go forward to make this happen. For that, I am very, very pleased. And so, what I am asking is, again, I'm asking you to waive the two-week rule, I feel like we're doing that tonight, but to waive it, because I would like to have, on your behalf, the Chairman of the Board sign the document. I have both Presidents willing to sign their respective agreements, so that we can begin to put this in place on May 14th.
Are there any questions or comments on the, the strategy for recovering the day of school? Seeing none, we're good to go, unless you feel a motion. Go ahead. Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize our Chair to sign the agreements with the two respective units, authorizing the, the, just the agreements. For the, to authorize how we finalize the duration of the 17-18 work year.
Is there a second? Seconded by Michael. Any questions or comments to that? Naomi?
Do we need to tack on waiving the two-week rule?
Would, would you mind? Would, would you mind?
I also would like to waive the two-week rule.
And resecond that. Thanks, Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. We'll get that taken care of.
Thank you.
And we're on to housekeeping. So the approval of the school board minutes for April 16th, 2018, I'll entertain a motion to accept, made by, Michael seconded by Andy. Any adjustments to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. On to item number 10, which is the consent agenda with Mark.
Thank you. Under consent tonight, we have the following educator resignations and retirements. Jeriann Anastis, Special Education Teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School, and Karen Sari, Special Education Teacher at Merrimack High School. In addition, we have the following educator nominations for 2018, 2019. Corey Ducharme, Social Studies Teacher, Merrimack High School. Morgan Ireland, Grade Two Teacher, Master Cola Elementary School. Kimberly O'Neil, Special Education Teacher, Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. Stacy Pap, Grade One Teacher, Master Cola Elementary School. Jennifer Pelletier, Grade Five Teacher, Master Cola Elementary School, Upper Elementary School. Laura Surcell, Social Studies Teacher, Merrimack High School. John Shippala Jr., Social Studies Teacher, Merrimack Middle School. Michaela Voitage, Grade Three Teacher, Thornton's Ferry Elementary School.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Andy?
I move we accept the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. Onto item number 11, which is other correspondence. Is there correspondence to come before the board? I have two. In all of our packets, we received from the New Hampshire Department of Education, compliance staff's report for indicator 12, early transitions, for the Department of Education. And we again received a 100% compliance score. Again, we usually have the special Student Services Director, I'm getting better at this, come before us with a comprehensive report, and the state is going a different direction, so we're getting these as correspondence now. So we'll just keep giving updates as they come in. I also got a second from the parents of the late Tim Gibson, and they are having the Military 5K. It's going to be at Merrimack, it's Military Appreciation, so it's going to be at Merrimack High School on the 19th, and invitation was extended. I will be accepting the invitation, and all are welcome. So it will be the 19th, and I will just email you a copy of the, of the card, so you can see, very lovely what they're trying to do. And I got another one from someone that's volunteering with the Alzheimer's Association, and it will kind of impact school, and probably in a good way if you don't feel getting after-school snacks. But they're having a hot dog sale, and because it's being held in the parking lot at Our Lady of Mercy for parent pickup, we just want to make aware, Thursday, June 21st, from 11:00 to 7:00, there's going to be a hot dog sale to raise money for the Alzheimer's Association. So if you want to grab a snack, or if you were doing parent pickup, just be aware that it might be a little extra traffic, kind of like if there was a busy funeral. So nothing, nothing earth-shattering, but just to be made aware. So I got that last night. So I'm good on that. Any other correspondence? Michael?
There was correspondence that was sent to the entire board, and the appreciation for our Chair, Shannon Barnes, in regards to her commitment to the Greater Woods, Greater Committee, and just the appreciation that they had in regards to that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Seeing none? Or on to item number 12, which is new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Marge?
So the first thing is I want to do is just tell you what's upcoming on May 21st, and that night will be a focus on Merrimack High School. So there will hopefully be students and staff to give you an update on some of the good things that have gone on. Also, Sarah Heimberg has been asked to come and do a presentation on her AOK program, which was promised to you. And Mark?
And in addition, under new business, so as the board knows, the revised homework protocol was implemented at the start of the 2017, 2018 school year. As with any new initiative, there must be a period of implementation to determine the initiative's possible strengths, potential limitations, and any prospective modifications. The 2017, 18 school year has provided that implementation time. As the board also knows, part of the implementation of this initiative has included, among other things, a parent and teacher survey, the results of which were shared with the board earlier in the winter, and site visits to our schools, at which was discussed the protocol's practical and theoretical implications on practice, grades, and motivation. So at the board's meeting on June 4th, I'll provide a final summary of the homework protocol implementation experience, thus concluding the periodic review of the protocol's implementation during this trial year. The summary will characterize the protocol's strengths, limitations, and will likely include some suggested modifications based on information gained during this evaluation year. So look forward to June 4th.
Thank you, Mark. Any other new business to come before the board? Seeing none, we will close new business. Onto committee reports. Are there committee reports from the board? Chris?
All right, so there's a bunch. Student Council positions are up for reelection. I am running unopposed, so hopefully you'll see me next year. Band has a concert March 24th, I believe. May. Yeah, it's been a long week. There's a dance this Friday, and Robotics has a competition next Saturday.
Excellent. Are there any other committee reports? I have a couple. I attended the Healthcare Cost Containment Committee, and we did have a guest from Oyster River, which, who talked about how they are implementing their wellness and cost containment, doing some events with their staff to get them to engage in things like biometric screenings, all those things that we work all year long to keep our health insurance rates stable. So, you know, always good when we have a guest at the table who has varying strategies to get engagement, and we'll definitely take a look at seeing what might fit for us here as well. And, and that, we will have one more meeting before the end of the year, and we'll wrap up for the summer. So the other thing was that the NHSBA had their new board member orientation, and Marge and I did attend and host the, the new board members, about the seven effective habits of highly effective board members, and had a very good dialogue. I think there were about 65 new board members in the room, and we had some really constructive dialogue, you know, when they were coming onto the board. We all remember that there was so much to learn that could be very overwhelming, and how to, you know, how to get some, get things done while you're just getting acclimated, so. And then actually, Cinda and I were both at the DOT meeting on May 1st, and the DOT is the one we talked about a few weeks ago, it was supposed to be the same as the water district election, got moved to May 1st, but they presented the widening of the Everett Turnpike, and there were a lot of residents there. But I went just to see what the plan was for the school district, because there were, it's obviously going to run right along our high school's parking lot, up to the Master Cola Elementary School, and Jamie's up to Babusick. So there's some, you know, obviously positives that will come from this. We will be getting a sound barrier from the highway, so as they're widening it, there will be a sound barrier going along Oak Garrett Drive, that will keep, you know, obviously the noise from encroaching onto, you know, the school buildings. I understand from the DOT that there's a very specific guideline they use for educational buildings that's even different from residential. So other than the emergency egress, that's in the middle of our parking lots, where the Merrimack Police Department will get onto the highway when they need to, there will be sound barriers along, along that corridor. The other thing that came of it, and I'm losing it, go ahead.
Was the Babusick Bridge. So as they recreate, as they go through the construction of Babusick, important for the Town Center meeting, for the Town Center Committee, is that they're going to ensure that there's a sidewalk on both sides of that road, and part of that reasoning is because of the proximity to the schools.
So, thank you. I was forgetting that, you could tell. Chris? And Michael, do you have your hand up? Okay.
With them expanding this cut-down in parking spaces at the high school.
The maps did not show any cut-in parking.
All right, good.
It'll be closer, but the barrier will be still, like, pretty much where the woods are. There'll be lesser woods between.
As long as my parking space isn't gone, I'm fine.
Well, the good news is you'll be out of college by the time they dig. So the project isn't even starting until 2022. But maybe you'll be teaching at Merrimack High School by then, you can worry about it that way. No pressure.
I was concerned about the parking. And so I know that you and I looked at that carefully along the maps, and I think they even confirmed that it would not cut into the parking in that area. Just the sightline won't be there, the trees, but the wall will make up for that.
Right.
Which I actually like the idea of a wall, you know, to be honest. I think that just having that barrier is good, from a safety standpoint and other things, so.
So, but, and Michael, you got your hand up?
Just a question. I'm not sure if the town, this might be a town item, but you did talk about the egress for the Merrimack Police Department to be able to get on the highway. If there would possibly be a move to that, or if the town actually wanted to move it to a different location or not, instead of having that wall kind of break up right in the middle, if it's easier to get it, like, one under the other of the wall, might be something to just think about.
Yeah, and they will be having public hearings, more planning, so if that's something that, I know we have a great relationship with the MPD, so if, having it closer maybe to where the tennis courts were or something, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, just maybe, possibly, just a different area, just something to think about.
Closer to their facilities than in the middle. I hear what you're saying. Okay, so that's conversations we can absolutely have collaboratively with, with our friends at the PD. So, good, good input. And that's all I had. So with that, we will close committee reports. We will, we will open it up for public participation to the same empty room we started with, so we will now close public comments on agenda items, because no one showed up. We'll take a moment to sign the manifest, and then I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA 91-a colon three, Roman numeral two, sections B and C, made by Mike's, is there a second? Seconded by Andy. Naomi, how do you vote?
In favor?
Michael?
In favor.
Cinda?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. We are recessed to non-public. Thank you and good night.